All right, let's call the order of the Sparks City Council meeting of two twenty-four, twenty twenty with the roll call.
Mayor Smith is absent. Mayor Protem Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Byby.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Acting City Attorney McCormick.
Here.
City Manager Krutz.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, let's begin with our invocation. Pastor Carlos Camacho. Sparks Seventh Day Advantage Church.
If you would bow your head and close your eyes. Dear Father, we come before your presence knowing that you are an amazing God. We are thankful today because we're counted among the living. And we're praying, Father, that as we spend some time together, that our time will be a blessing to the city. Father, we believe that you have been awesome from generation to generation. And today, as we stand in a place where decisions will be made, we pray, Father, that your presence will be the most important thing. Father, we also understand that we have been called for a public service. And I'm praying for each one of the officers, each one of the people here, that their heart will know and that they would understand that we have you and that we can always invite you and ask you to bless us so that we can act according to your will. Father, thank you so much. Please bless each one of the people here and also bless the agenda items and the decisions that will be made so that this can continue to be a growing and an amazing and an upbeat city. So we thank you and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Krutz, will you lead us?
In my honor, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment? No public comment? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Okay, we're going to close public comment. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve. Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Anderson and a second by Councilman Abbott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Minutes, looking for approval of the minutes for the Budget Workshop or the Sparks City Council meeting and the Budget Workshop of February tenth.
Move to approve.
I have a second.
I'll second that motion.
We had a motion by Councilman Dare, a second by Councilwoman Byby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number seven, announcements, presentation, recognition items and items of special interest. And we have seven point one, a commendation, Lee Metcalf and the career in technical education students of Edward C. Reed High School. Lee here? Well, we're going to read it anyways. Mr. Dare, will you help us out?
Sounds good. Whereas science teacher Lee Metcalf and the career in technical education students at Edward C. Reed High School in Sparks, Nevada, won a Levenson MIT Ivan team grant from the School of Engineering at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. And whereas the highly competitive national grant initiative offers high school students a rewarding hands-on experience engaging them in the process of invention, students work in teams to identify and solve a real-world problem by applying basic engineering principles as they develop their solution. And whereas Reed High School students are working on a device to remove cigarette butts from storm drains to help municipalities to clear the most common, one of the most toxic sources of litter from these sewer systems. And whereas the students' work will culminate with a trip in June to showcase their invention at Eureka Fest, the team will have an opportunity to meet with the Nevada Congressional delegation on Capitol Hill and will showcase their invention at the Smithsonian National Museum of American History on June nineteenth, twenty twenty. Therefore, Ronald Smith, Mayor of the City of Sparks, hereby joins with City Council in commending Lee Metcalf and the career in technical education students at Edward C. Reed High School for their dedication in making a positive impact in the world through innovation.
That went by quickly. Seven point two, Boards of Commission vacancy announcement. Mr. Krutz.
Mayor Protem Lawson, Neil Krutz here, where there are Building Code Board of Appeals. We have a single vacancy on that board. Candidates who want to compete for that position should either be a registered electrical engineer or a licensed electrical contractor with at least ten years of experience. The term for this vacancy begins March thirty-first of this year and runs through the end of March twenty twenty-two, and we're taking applications through five p.m. this Friday, the twenty-eighth. If you are interested in serving on that committee, please complete a community service application available either from the city clerk's office or the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Once you're there, click on Government, then Boards and Commissions, then Volunteering for a Sparks Board or Commission, fill out the online application and hit Submit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now moving on to consent items. Anyone wish to take one of the items out of order or looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, looking for a second?
Second.
I got a motion by Councilman Abbott and a second by Councilman Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to general business. Consideration, discussion and possible approval of the mayor's appointment to the Sparks Citizens' Advisory Committee from the Sparks Planning Commission from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. David Blanco, Scott Carey, Frank Peterson, Evan Pritzos, Mike Rossen, Shelley Reed and Diane Vanderwell. Mr. Krutz.
For the record, Neil Krutz, your city manager here. Unfortunately, I did not have a chance to catch up with the mayor and understand if he, what his decision was in his absence here today.
Then it's in our motion.
It's in your motion. All right, then we stand to do what you'd like.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion for the mayor's recommendation.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Move to approve the appointment of David Blanco to the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
A motion by Councilman Anderson and a second by Councilman Abbott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Blanco here? By chance?
No.
No? Okay, nine point two. Do we need a backup for Reed High School or?
I was going to ask, can we just take a picture?
Absolutely. So we're going to, we're going to take a quick break here. We just saw Reed walked in the door. So, yeah, let's get a picture and we'll send, we'll give him some money and get him back to school.
Well, we're not giving these guys money. That's, let's not confuse that. We just have something special for them.
Oh.
Not in person.
Chris is going to give you some money.
Why don't you guys come on down? We want to get a picture with you. This, we just, just read this, so you just missed it, but we want to show you how proud we are. And you want to just come say your name real quick? Right there, you can sit down right there. Yeah, just.
What if we read it again?
My name is Alex Marsh. I am from Reed High School.
I have permission to read it again.
You know what? To quote from a movie, "You call that a one, two, three? Let's do it again."
Let's do it again.
But we talked over her, so we couldn't hear.
So, I'm sorry. Come say hello. And did they break your arm on this trip?
So, my name is Alex Marsh and I'm a senior at Reed.
Elijah Bear, sophomore at Reed.
I'm Alan Tang, a sophomore in Reed High School.
Wonderful, wonderful. We have a commendation for you here, so I'd like to read it to you and hopefully we got all the facts right here. So, it says, "Whereas, science teacher Lee Metcalf," is that you? You should come down here too then, "and the career in technical education students at Edward C. Reed High School in Sparks, Nevada, won a Levenson MIT Inven Team Grant from the School of Engineering in the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. And whereas this highly competitive national grant initiative offers high school students a rewarding hands-on experience engaging them in the process of invention, students work in teams to identify and solve a real-world problem by applying basic engineering principles as they develop their solution. And whereas Reed High School students are working on a device to remove cigarette butts from storm drains to help municipalities clear the most common and one of the most toxic sources of litter from these sewer systems. And whereas the students' work will culminate with a trip in June to showcase their invention at Eureka Fest, the team will have an opportunity to meet with the Nevada Congressional delegation on Capitol Hill and will showcase their invention at the Smithsonian National Museum of American History on June nineteenth, twenty twenty. Now therefore, Ronald E. Smith, Mayor of City of Sparks, hereby joins with the City Council here in commending Lee Metcalf and the career in technical education students at Edward C. Reed High School for their dedication in making a positive impact in the world through innovation." Are there any questions from anybody or any thoughts?
If you want to tell us anything.
Yeah, whose idea was this?
So, the idea was originally mine and I created the team together with a bunch of freshmen and sophomores so that I can get everybody to be involved as I'm the only senior graduating. And yeah.
You're the only one at Reed graduating?
(laughing).
Just kidding. So, what did you guys, how did you get on board? What interested you most about this?
She pitched this idea during a class once and it kind of really motivated us because we wanted to help clean the plastics out of our ocean, Pyramid Lake.
Perfect.
I want to say I really appreciate it. When people throw their cigarette butts out their window, it like truly, truly freaks me out. I'm like, stop it! So, this is fantastic.
Yes, how, how is it coming along?
It's doing quite well for the project. We got the whole team assembled and we got our three prototypes working on. So, yeah.
Progress. Good.
Oh, yeah. We're coming down.
Good.
Welcome in. Bring a picture with you guys.
Move here and right here.
Right here. Yes, there we go.
Good job. Yeah. It's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.[703.12][703.12](applause). Okay. Now, we're going to move on to item nine point two. Consideration, discussion and possible appointment of one member of the Sparks City Council to represent the City of Sparks on the Board of Trustees for the Western Regional Water Commission from the following pool of applicants. Charlene Byby, Christopher Dare, Ed Lawson and Ron Smith. Mr. Krutz.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem. Members of the City Council. For the record, Neil Krutz, your city manager, and the mayor's recommendation for this position is Councilmember Dare.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I move to appoint Christopher Dare as the City of Sparks representative on the Board of Trustees for the Western Regional Water Commission for a two-year term ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
And a motion by Councilwoman Abbott, second by Councilwoman Byby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. You got lucky. And Christopher, just so everyone knows, Christopher is currently the vice chair of that board and doing a wonderful job for us. Thank you. Consideration, discussion and possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement, AC five six five five, with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County in the estimated amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for sanitary sewer drainage and surface improvements to be constructed with RTC's East Prater Way Rehabilitation Project, which is underway today, as I got stuck in that traffic.
Apologies for that, Mr. Mayor Protem.
No, it's okay. We're looking forward to the new approved street.
Needed to phone a friend there to help me get this to full screen, so apologies. Mr. Mayor Protem and members of council, for the record, Kevin Porter, utility manager. And the item before you is, for your consideration, is an interlocal cooperative agreement with the RTC for some utility work that will be combined with the rehabilitation that they are beginning on Prater Way. The figure before you shows Prater between McCarran Boulevard and Sparks Boulevard. And the RTC project will generally rehab that entire section from McCarran on the left side of your screen or the west side, all the way to Sparks Boulevard on the right side, east side of the screen. The City of Sparks, through our sanitary sewer master plan, had identified some sewer upgrades that were required along Prater Way, and we had identified those to occur in fiscal year twenty-one. Those were previously approved by councils as part of our current five-year CIP. And we certainly would not want to, to come back and have to do those, tear up the roadway and do those sanitary sewer improvements after the RTC went through, rehabbed and paved a brand-new road. So this interlocal cooperative agreement will allow us to reimburse RTC for those utility, utility upgrades. The green portion of the graphic on the screen is, represents the sanitary sewer upgrades and then on the right side of the screen, the blue portion, are some spot repairs for the storm drain system. We always take a look at our utility network under the ground any time that we are going to tear up a roadway or that the RTC is going to tear up a roadway. And in this case, we had planned on doing the sewer upgrades and we had noticed through that, that last look that we wanted to get some storm drain upgrades included in that as well. That's what the blue portion represents on the right-hand side of the screen. The estimated cost for the upgrades is one million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, and the, the interlocal cooperative agreement is for the actual cost of construction, so we'll know that once the, the job is complete. Because the RTC is planning on beginning this work now, or at least before July first of this year, and we had slated this work for after July first, the, the utility work on our side is not funded, and so that role will require a budget augmentation. That item will follow this item and will be presented by Stacy Hammerling. In terms of the interlocal cooperative agreement, staff recommends approval. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions? Mr. Anderson.
Kevin, could you tell us about how much we're saving on this by working with RTC on it?
Certainly, the, the estimate that we've come up with is on the order of a couple of hundred thousand dollars. Anytime that a road is being torn up for rehabilitation and utility work needs to be done beneath that road, there's cost savings if you do that at the same time. Obviously, if you have to go in later or even before, tear up the roadway and then patch pavement back in that section or pave a whole new section, then you're, you're doubling the cost of the surface treatment there. And then when we have the ability to lump in utility work with a relatively large dollar construction contract the RTC is going to do, then we realize there's some economies of scale there that we're able to realize savings over in terms of the traffic control, the design, things of those nature. So when we sat down and, and tried to estimate the overall savings that we get by incorporating this utility work, it's on the order of a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Great. And I, I just want to say thank you guys for looking at these kind of projects ahead of time so that, yeah, although we need to make a change to our budget, it's nice that now we've got potentially a couple hundred thousand more that we can work with, so thank you.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion if you are. Move to approve interlocal cooperative agreement, AC five six five five, with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County in the estimated amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for the sanitary sewer drainage and surface improvements to be constructed with RTC's East Prater Way Rehabilitation Project.
Okay, Mr. Anderson made a motion. Do I have a second? Anybody?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Abbott. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Nine point four. Consideration and discussion and possible adoption of Resolution three three five six to augment the fiscal year twenty budget of the Sewer Enterprise Fund by one million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand to provide appropriations for sewer and storm drain upgrades on East Prater Way in, in coordination with the work being performed by the Regional Transportation Commission. That's a mouthful.
Sorry. Stacy Hammerling, Budget Manager. This item is directly related to the one you just heard on the interlocal agreement with RTC and will, is asking you to adopt the resolution to augment the budget in the Sewer Enterprise Fund. While there are funds available for this project in fiscal twenty, our current fiscal year, there are no budget appropriations as it was planned for the next year. But, so this will, this resolution will clean up that budget issue, providing those appropriations and avoid a budget violation. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Looking for a motion? Mr. Dare.
I move to adopt Resolution number three three five six to augment the FY twenty budget of the Sewer Enterprise Fund by one million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand to provide FY twenty appropriations for sewer and storm drain upgrades on East Prater Way in coordination with work being performed by the Regional Transportation Commission.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Councilwoman Byby. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Stacy. Consideration, discussion and possible approval of the reimbursement to the City of Reno for a construction contract with Nelson Electric, Inc. for the raw sewage pump station switch gear and LVDC dash one A switchboard rehabilitation, rehabilitation project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, with the Sparks share being an amount up to, I love these numbers, three hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and one penny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Don't forget that penny.
Yes, sir. Members of council, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager, excuse me. You have before you the, the traditional reimbursement agreement with the City of Reno for this capital improvement project at Tom Wharf. This particular one intends to address some aging electronic components at our headworks. I remind you, that's where basically the collection system connects to the treatment plant. When the wastewater comes into the plant, it's approximately thirty-five feet below ground. These pumps, the raw sewage pumps, lift it up to the treatment process, so if these don't work, we're out of business. This, these electronic components, the switch gears which operate the pumps and the low-voltage distribution center, LVDC, is what controls them. It's, they're, the components are approximately twenty-five years old and they're showing signs of age. And this is in the approved Tom Wharf CIP. It is anticipated work. As is customary, the City of Reno put it out to bid. The low bid was received. Sorry, I can't even read my own writing. With, I'm sorry, I'm blanking. Nelson, there it is. I'm sorry. Nelson Electric was the lowest responsive bidder, so we're looking for the reimbursement to Reno so we can get this project underway. With that, I'll happy to answer questions.
Questions from the council? See, none? How about a motion, please? Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve reimbursement of three hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and one penny to the City of Reno for Sparks share construction contract with Nelson Electric Company, Inc. for the raw sewage pump station switch gear and LVDC dash one A switchboard rehabilitation project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility.
Looking for a second. Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Drinkwater. We got, oh, you have another one here. Consideration, discussion and possible approval of a consulting agreement, AC five six five four, for the construction management services with ACOM Technical Services. I've been fighting this cough that everyone else has had. I'm going to let you take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Members of council, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager. This is the companion item to the one you just approved. This is the construction management agreement with AECOM Technical Services. That's the engineering firm that designed the work. We're seeking to retain them to do construction inspection and testing on the project, particularly technical, electrical components outside our ability to provide, outside the ability of the staff to provide that level of inspection and testing. It's customary to hire a, a testing firm. Often, we use the design engineering firm, which is what we're asking for in this case. So, this, obviously, this is an agreement with the City of Reno to reimburse them because they'll be under contract with Reno for these inspection services during construction. So with that, happy to answer questions.
Questions from the council? See, none? Looking for a motion? Anybody? Bueller?
I'll make the, make the motion.
Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve the consulting agreement for construction management services with ACOM Technical Services Incorporated for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, raw sewage pump station switch gear and LVDC dash one A switchboard rehabilitation project in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, with the City of Sparks share being ninety-three thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Abbott.
Second.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none? Looking for a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to nine point seven. Consideration, discussion and possible approval of a tentative map request for a four hundred and fifty-four lot, single-family subdivision on a site of sixty-five acres and size generally located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park. You going to be a long presentation, Ian?
There's a lot more stuff there. It shouldn't be too long.
In the FS six.
Get comfortable, but it won't be too.
Zoning District. Ian? Remember, I'm trying to get on my Harley today.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the City Council, I'm Ian Crandall, your Development Services Manager. This is a request for four hundred and fifty-four lot, single-family tentative map. The site, as you can see here on the map, is directly east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and essentially southeast of Vista Road or Vista Boulevard. The city entered into a development agreement with the property owner in August of two thousand and eighteen and amended that development agreement in January of this year. That amendment was very minor to address the way that we brought areas that are in the floodplain out of the floodplain in regards to the tentative mapping process. The site is zoned SF six, which typically has a six thousand square foot minimum lot size. In this case, the applicant has gone with the small lot standards that are in the Sparks Municipal Code and is using smaller lot sizes, which is permitted so long as they don't exceed the maximum density for the site, which is seven point three units per acre. They're just under that. They also submitted a fiscal impact analysis as part of the development agreement process they went through back in August of last, or of twenty eighteen. They submitted a, an amendment to that or an update letter to that that showed that they, the development agreement showed, or that showed that the fiscal impact would still be positive to the City of Sparks with this development. The, now I'm going to show you the tentative map, but it's going to change orientation just so everybody's prepared. So the, the orientation is this way is now north. This is Vista Boulevard. The site will be accessed from Vista Boulevard via some Golden Eagle Regional Park roads. That is Home Run Drive and Touchdown Drive. The Golden Eagle Regional Park is located on BLM, on Bureau of Land Management property and is operated through an RP&amp;P lease. As such, all the roads within the Wingfield Commons is the name that this is going to or will be private roads because they do not connect to the city's road infrastructure, the road network. The applicant will be required to construct and maintain their access road, which is here in blue, as well as a fire apparatus access road there highlighted in orange. There are twelve findings related to tentative maps. The first one is conformance with the comprehensive plan and zoning. The proposed tentative map complies both with the comprehensive plan in terms of density. The, the comprehensive plan land use designation for the site is intermediate density residential, which requires that densities be between six and ten dwelling units per acre. The SF six zoning district has a maximum density of seven point three, as I mentioned earlier, and as designed, this development will be at about six point nine eight, so just under seven dwelling units per acre in compliance with both the zoning and the comprehensive plan. In addition, this development supports goal H two, which is to promote strong and diverse housing market and showing positive impact to the, showing fiscal sustainability. Policy C four, which requires sidewalks in all developments in the City of Sparks as well, as well as policy CF one, which requires that city services can be provided at acceptable levels. Findings T two and T seven, I tried to group these into logical groupings as we go through this. Findings T two and T seven have to do with streets. The development agreement requires that the access road and the fire apparatus access road for this development be approved by the BLM. The BLM did approve those roads and their locations through the Golden Eagle Regional Plan, Park Master Plan. Plan, Park Master Plan update that recently happened. As part of the development agreement process, the applicant submitted a very extensive traffic impact analysis that showed improvements that would be necessary on Vista, at the intersection on Vista Boulevard and Home Run Drive, as well as some improvements to Home Run Drive and Touchdown Drive. That impact analysis was based on four hundred and fifty lots, and so they did submit an addendum showing the additional impact of the additional four lots of four hundred fifty-four. That level of impact didn't change any of those required improvements in any way. Findings T three and T nine look for us to consult with outside agencies and to take their input into consideration. The Washoe County Health District did supply a comment letter with two comments very specific to this site. One is that an existing septic system that is on the site be abandoned, as well as an existing domestic well that's on the site be abandoned as part of their process. Compliance with this requirement is required by condition four. Findings T four and T five look for sufficient or adequate water and sewer services be able to be provided. The applicant has estimated that four hundred and forty-one point three seven acre feet of water will be needed. Condition five requires that the applicant secure those water rights prior to the approval of the final map, and the applicant has estimated their average daily sewer demand or sewer flow from this development to be a hundred and five thousand gallons. The city sewer model shows sufficient capacity for this development, subject to some system requirements that are required, or system improvements that are required by the development agreement. Findings T six and T ten look at other public services and how they will be impacted. Fire and police protection will be provided by the city of Sparks, and this site is within the four-minute travel time standard for this Sparks' fire. The applicant has submitted as well a fire protection plan that considers and addresses wildland urban interface to the approval of the fire chief as required by the development agreement. The development of this site will have impacts on the Washoe County School District. In a letter from the Washoe County School District, they estimated that this development will add a hundred and eleven students to Van Gorder Elementary, forty to Sky Ranch Middle School, and forty-three to Spanish Springs High School. Van Gorder Elementary is overcapacity, as is Spanish Springs High School. However, Bow Hatch Elementary, which is being constructed in Kylie Ranch, and the new HUG High School, which is being constructed on Wild Creek Golf Course, are expected to provide relief to both of these schools. And then finally, findings, these findings didn't really necessarily go together, but just being consolidated. Finding T eight looks at floodplain and soap. There's no specific, or there are not any slopes on this site that would require the implementation of our slopes and ridges. However, a small area, again, we're back to north being to the left here, a small area is in the floodplain. That is the whole discussion we had about the amendment to the conditional letter of map revision process, how they would bring that out of the floodplain. We have received from the applicant the confirmation that they have submitted that to FEMA. We are requiring through condition fifteen that an approved conditional letter of map revision be received prior to the final map being approved. Finding T eleven looks for other identified impacts. Those in this case would be architecture and landscaping. The applicant will have to comply with the architecture and landscaping requirements of the Sparks' Municipal Code, and evidence of that compliance will have to be submitted with the final map documents. And then finally, finding T twelve looks for notice and a meeting. Public notice for tentative maps is accomplished through the posting of the agenda, and this meeting and the planning commission qualify or meet the meeting requirements for tentative maps. The planning commission is recommending approval of this tentative map. That's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council. Mr. Dare.
So, I'm interested in the traffic study, looking at this. I just wanna make sure I understand what they're going to do to, if I understood right, they are responsible for some mitigation, shifting some stuff around here. I'm looking at it right now, I believe, on one of your guys' design, or that they turned in. So, they have to add a left turn lane and a right easement in? Is that what they're, those are two main areas they have to do?
I couldn't speak specifically to all of those requirements. I didn't study that extensively in preparation for this, but they will have to do intersection improvements at the intersection of Vista, and this is Scorpius and Home Run. There are extensive improvements that need to happen there as far as turnpockets and so forth. City engineer John Erickson may be able to help more specifically remind us of what those improvements are.
Kelsmann Dare. During the analysis, we determined that there were a deceleration lane going into, the park would need to be lengthened, as well as capacity improvements at the signalized intersection.
Okay. This, because this all seems kinda, this kinda happens, I think, towards the end of when we have land, everything kinda piles on each other, and it seems like a very interesting compilation. It's not your average, normal how we do things, it seems.
Yeah, we have triggers of the total number of lots that need to be, or that would be allowed to be constructed, and then the improvements on Vista would need to occur. So, there are triggers in the development agreement for those improvements.
So, they don't have to do this right away? They'll have to do this once they get to a certain level?
That is correct.
Well, that's good to know, too. And, I just, like I said, I think from the time I've heard about this, I've been kinda concerned of how they're gonna make this work with everyone coming in and out of there during game time. I mean, traffic's gonna get interesting there, and so it's not your normal traffic study. So...
But you're gonna have to enjoy some softball.
Exactly. Well, and then, like, I'm even concerned about the people turning left. If you're turning left and if there's any kinda pileup there, it doesn't show that there's any mitigation coming left?
No, the traffic analysis didn't indicate that.
We don't anticipate that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm glad. And are they responsible at all? So, because I know they're responsible for their own private roads, do they, once they get this done, this comes back to our responsibility?
Yes. Yeah, the roads within the park will be the responsibility of the city of Sparks.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
Councilwoman Bybee.
I move to approve the tentative map request for a four hundred and fifty-four lot, single-family subdivision on a site sixty-five acres in size, generally located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and south of Vista Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, in the SF six, single-family residential zoning district, adopting findings T one through T twelve, and the facts supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report and subject to conditions of approval one through fifteen.
Okay, looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Anderson, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Looking for nine point eight also?
Correct.
Consideration, discussion of possible approval of the tentative map request for a hundred and eighty-two lot, single-family subdivision on a site sixty-two point four-nine acres in size located at seventy-nine hundred Pyramid Way, Sparks, Nevada, in the new urban district, Stone Brook Plan Development and Zoning District. Ian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Members of the city council, once again, Ian Crandall, Development Services Manager. This is a request for a tentative map for a hundred and eighty-two single-family lots in the Stone Brook Plan Development. Just to orient you to the map here, here's Pyramid, Pyramid Way, Lapa Sada Drive, this Tierra del Sol Parkway coming in, and this just south of the site is the Lazy Five Library and Park Complex. The site is located here in blue, just to kinda clarify against this on the map. This is the, kinda the outline of the tentative map that's being requested. However, it's on two parcels that total about a hundred and ten acres, but this will be only about a sixty-two and a half acre portion of that site. The handbook designates this site as LMDR, which stands for Low Medium Density Residential, which allows a maximum density of eight units per acre. The comprehensive plan land use designation for the site is IDR, or Intermediate Density Residential, which has a range of six to ten dwelling units per acre. The proposed map would permit lots between sixty-five hundred square feet and eighteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven square feet. The proposed density minus the open space is about three point eight units per acre. This is conformance with the handbook, as it only sets a maximum end to that range of the density. However, it's below the minimum density of the IDR, or Intermediate Density Residential designation in the comprehensive plan. State law, however, specifically addresses this in the guidelines for tentative maps and says where we do have a conflict between the tentative, or the zoning and the comprehensive plan land use, that the zoning, or the handbook in this case, takes precedence. So, it is a little out of conformance with the comprehensive plan, but it does conform with the zoning. In addition, the applicant owns essentially the west portion of the Stone Brook Plan Development, and they do own a portion just north here that is designated for multifamily, and they have submitted a letter stating their intent to transfer the additional density that's not used in this tentative map into their multifamily, which is allowed per the handbook. Additionally, they also submitted an update letter to their fiscal impact analysis that did show that although this is a reduction in density, it does still show a positive fiscal impact over a twenty-year period. There are twelve findings related to tentative maps. Finding one shows, looks for conformance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning. As stated, there is a small nonconformance with the comprehensive plan as far as total density. However, it does conform with the density requirements of the tentative, or of the planned development handbook, that it's in the Stone Brook Plan Development. In addition, the development of the site is, does support comprehensive plan goals H two, providing housing and being positive, fiscally positive over a twenty-year period. The development also has sidewalks throughout in conformance with policy C four, and city services can be provided to this site in conformance of policy CF one. Findings T two and T seven address the streets. There are significant roadway improvements required along the west side of, the west side of Stone Brook. However, the one thousand seven hundred and eighty average daily trips generated by this tentative map will not require the development of all those, the construction of all those improvements. But the applicant or the property owner has submitted to the city engineer the infrastructure backbone plan for this whole site, as they are looking to develop all of it, and getting that approved would help them in developing all of this portion, even the northern portions which have significant commercial development on them. This site will be accessed from Pyramid Way via Tierra del Sol Parkway and Summer Wild Drive, which is a realignment of this existing dirt road. It'll kinda come in and come to the north side here. Stone Brook, the extension of Stone Brook Parkway, which will come through here and come out to Pyramid Highway, will not be constructed initially with the development of this tentative map. Findings T three and T nine look at outside agency comments and their impact. We did receive a letter from the Washoe County Air Quality Management District that indicated that there is a air quality monitoring station near this development, and they are asking that the applicant will work with them in determining whether this monitoring station will continue to meet EPA citing standards. The applicant has agreed to do that, to work with them. Findings T four and T five look at whether there's adequate water and sewer available at the site. The projected sewer generation for this development is sixty-three thousand, seven hundred gallons per day, and the city sewer model shows adequate capacity for this. The projected water usage for this development is eighty-six point eight four acre feet per year, and water rights sufficient to serve this site will be required prior to dedication or approval of a final map. Findings T six and T ten look at other public services provided to the site. The development will be served by Sparks' police, and the site does not meet the four-minute travel time requirement of the Sparks' fire. However, this area is served by a automatic aid agreement with Truckee Meadow Fire Protection District providing fire service, providing service to the area. The development agreement will also, or this development will also increase attendance at Washoe County Schools. A letter from the school district indicated that this development will add thirty-seven new students to Hall Elementary, sixteen to Shaw Middle, and seventeen to Sparks High School. Of these schools, only Sparks High School is at or above capacity, and as mentioned before, the new HUG High School is anticipated to provide relief to Spanish Springs High School. Did I say Sparks? I said Sparks. I apologize. Spanish Springs High School will receive seventeen new students, and that capacity is...
Donald was getting excited.
We're expanding everywhere.
Unfortunately. The last findings, other impacts, this site is relatively flat, and there are no slopes that will trigger the slopes and ridges requirements. There's also no floodplain on this site. Finding T eleven, looking at other identified impacts, again, architecture and landscaping, the architecture and landscaping standards of the Stone Brook Plan Development Handbook will have to be met and demonstrated prior to the approval of a final map. And then finally, finding T twelve about notice in a hearing. The posting of this item on the agenda meets the noticing requirements, and the planning commission and city council meetings meet the meeting requirements. Planning commission did recommend approval of this item. That's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Charlene.
So, as we're looking at traffic impacts, would that include, obviously, the main road nearby is gonna be Pyramid Highway? So, are we looking at how many expected, how much travel that'll impact Pyramid?
The traffic impact analysis did look at the impact of these additional trips on Pyramid Highway. Now, this is essentially one very small area of a much larger plan development that will have more impacts, but the impact of this tentative map on the adjacent roadway network is actually fairly minor, at only seventeen hundred, almost eighteen hundred trips a day. That's a pretty small impact for Pyramid Highway.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Anderson.
So, I just wanna make sure that I understand correctly. At this point, we're not looking at any additional signals or anything on Pyramid coming out of that development?
So, there will be some additional improvements that will involve a signal and so forth, but this specific tentative map will not trigger the requirement for that to be constructed. Some of the other development on this site will eventually meet that trigger, and we did create conditions of approval that talk about that trigger depending on timing, but it's not anticipated that this specific tentative map will have enough impact to trigger that requirement.
Mr. Dare.
RTC does have some improvements coming up to there, but it's not going all the way to that level. I mean, I think they go all the way up to Walmart. I think we were just in a meeting, we saw they go up a little bit past Walmart and things. You're gonna see some expansion, and then even future, there'll be some continued work they're doing. So, I think as this all fills in, we'll start seeing some larger improvement in the future. But I do know that that's a constant attention for RTC as well. They're watching it as it grows, just FYI.
Any other comments, questions? If not, looking for a motion.
Ready for a motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the tentative map for a one hundred and eighty-two lot, single-family subdivision on a site sixty-two point four-nine acres in size, located at seventy-nine hundred Pyramid Way, Sparks, Nevada, in the NUD, New Urban District, Stone Brook, Stone Brook Plan Development, Zoning District, adopting findings one through twelve, and the facts supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval one through seventeen.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Dare. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, nine point nine. Consideration, discussion of possible approval to provide paramedic-level emergency medical service on Engine Eleven at Station One in accordance with the paramedic program implementation schedule adopted by the city council on August twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen. Chief Reed.
Good afternoon. Mayor Protem, council members. Excited to be here this morning. Jim Reed, your fire chief, with my EMS captain, Jeff Sullivan. Today, and I want to come to you today to ask for consideration and possible approval of providing paramedic-level service, Engine Eleven at Station One. of providing paramedic-level service in Engine 11 at Station 1. What does the paramedic services get us? It gets us airway management, it gets us twelve lead connections to your heart so the paramedics can see if there's something going wrong. It gives you administrations of medications that can help with a cardiac event or pain management. It's the highest level of prehospital care that we can give out in the field. A little history, like Mayor Protem said. It was approved by this council in August of 2016 to move forward with this project. April 17, we started with Station 4 and 5. The next year, May of 18, we added Station 2. January of last year, 2019, we added Station 3. And I'm excited to be here for you today for our next step in that. It'll be your approval, if I can get that, and then state approval. They come out and they look at all of our gear and make sure we have everything we need, and that's supposed to be tomorrow. So once we get that, we'll be able to start Engine 11 as a paramedic service. When we started in 2016, we had fifteen paramedics on the department. And since then, we've only been hiring paramedics. So we're up to twenty-nine paramedics total, twenty-one of those are at the firefighter/paramedic level. And that's all I have. I can answer any questions, or Mr. Sullivan?
Questions from the council? Mr. Anderson?
Actually, I just have a question. Do we have any way of tracking how often we're actually providing those services?
You take that?
Yep.
Jeff Sullivan, Training Captain, Sparks Fire. Yes, we do. We currently have what's called EPCR, where we can break down individual call types and see exactly which ones we provided those services. We also have a newer software that's helping enhance that data tracking.
So do you happen to know off the top of your head ballpark, how often we're called upon to provide those?
Paramedic services specifically, or EMS services? I don't have those exact numbers right now. I have the individual call types that usually require paramedic services, such as cardiac arrests and such, but not the individual percentage for paramedic only.
I just think it'd be nice to have those numbers so we can say, yeah, look, here's a service that is now being provided to our community. I think that'd be nice if we could get that information.
So just in January, we did start a new statistical program, and we're getting that up and running, and we will be able to pull that data out.
Thank you.
Mr. Dare?
Part of, there's a lot of wisdom, and I think moving forward on this, just in our region, a lot's going on. And this is one of the things that, we work very close with REMZA. I get to help, as a health board member, help oversee some of what happens there. And I would just say, watching and seeing, it's good for us to have this in our city as something that can be a big help if something were to happen where we need to come up and help, because sometimes that does happen. And right now, I know Reno has a couple for that purpose, and for us to be prepared and to continue to train our people. You never know what's in the future, and for us to be prepared and ready to serve our community is vital. And so thanks for doing this. I think it's really wise and strategic on our part, and then it continues to help us move down the road of what we're doing. So, thank you.
Mr. Abbott?
Hey, Chief. This is, this engine goes east from Station 1, right?
Right.
And then are we going to look at Engine 12 at a later date? Is that a conversation?
Yeah, probably next year.
Okay.
Yeah. The schedule put it about one engine every year.
Cool. Just wanted to check. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the implementation of paramedic-level emergency medical service on Engine 11 at Station 1.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving right along, Chief. Item nine point ten, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of funding allocation in the amount of $202,910 fiscal year 20. Oh, total of two hundred and two, nine, ten, of which is broke up ninety-one thousand eight hundred and ten in fiscal year 20, one hundred and eleven thousand one hundred dollars in fiscal year 21. Tracy?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. And before you today, on behalf of Francine Burge and the Sparks Tourism and Marketing Committee. As you may be aware, the City of Sparks receives an annual allocation of room tax revenues from the RSCBA or the Reno-Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority through the Washoe County Taxes on Transient Lodging Act of 1999. Each year, the Sparks Tourism and Marketing Committee solicits funding applications from our local special event producers in Sparks to, and recommends the funding allocations to assist event producers to pay some of their event production costs. The committee goals include civic engagement, economic development, and tourism. On March 11th of 2019, the city council approved a recommendation from the Tourism and Marketing Committee to allocate $230,300 for the 2019 events. These funds are used primarily to assist producers with marketing and promotion of their events. More recently, the Tourism Marketing Committee met on January 30th, 2020, to review the applications for the 2020 special event season. As a result of the meeting, the committee voted to recommend that city council approve the funding amounts as follows. So on the screen, I have a list of the 2020 events. $9,800 would go to, upon approval, to the Sierra Nevada Lavender and Honey Festival, $2,000 to the Free Fishing Day, $10,000 to Thirty-Nine North Thursdays, which occur once a month for twelve months, $20,000 to the Nugget Event Center for their ten concerts, $30,000 for Star Spangled Sparks, $15,000 for Art Town Presents, which is a concert at the Nugget Event Center, $5,000 for the annual Water Lantern Festival, $20,000 for Pumpkinpalooza, $30,000 for Hot August Nights, $16,400 for Thirty-Nine North, North Pole Village, $2,400 for the Fourth Annual Marnell Holiday Tree Lighting, $30,000 for the Best in the West Rib Cook-Off, and $12,300 for the Northern Nevada International Dragon Boat Festival. Total recommended allocation this year is $202,910 for the 2020 event season. That concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Question by council. Ms. Bybee?
Tracy, I'm confused on, I think I know the answer, but it's fiscal 2020 and then fiscal 2021. Is it because of when the events on the calendar fall?
Yes.
Because they're split up almost in half? Is it before July 1st or after, or yet Star Spangled Sparks is in fiscal year 2020? How was this divided out fiscal year? I'm a little confused.
The funding is for the events that occur in the calendar year 2020. So we broke it out to show you that of this request, $91,810 will be applied to events between now and June 30th, and then $111,100 will be applied to events that are occurring from July 1 through December 30th.
Okay.
For a total of the 202.
We get our money on a calendar year.
Okay.
But we are allocating it per our fiscal year.
Okay.
It's confusing for everybody involved.
Okay. And I thought I knew that, except Star Spangled Sparks is Fourth of July, but they need the money to put it on by June 30th. So technically, the event falls after July 1st, but the funding source is needed before that.
Correct.
That's the only thing that threw me.
Fifty percent of each event's funding is released to them prior to their event.
Okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion?
I can make a motion?
Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the funding allocation of $202,910 for 2020 special events as recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee. Should I add the 2020 and 2021 just for sake of what we said?
If you could, that would be.
Yeah, I thought so. So, again, take two. I move to approve the funding allocation of $202,910 for the 2020 slash 2021 special events as recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee.
Okay, looking for a second? Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. First reading. Nine point one one. Okay, I'm new to this part, so help me out.
All right.
Madam clerk?
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2773 to amend Title 20, Chapter 20.03.020, Home Occupations of the Sparks Municipal Code to add or revise standards pertaining to hours of operation, the number of permits allowed per dwelling unit, permitted uses, and standards and procedures for revocation of home occupation permits, CA-4-19.
Public hearing for this bill and its consideration and possible approval will be held at the regular city council meeting scheduled for Monday, March 9th, 2020. Okay. I'll go on to, uh, public hearing items. Eleven point one, second reading, public hearing, discussion, and possible adoption of Bill Number 2772 to amend Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to revise definitions and the map permitted uses and sign standard for the MUD District.
You're Protem?
Urington's finest. How are you today?
I'm well, thank you for asking. I probably have some other competition that would choose to take that name too. I don't know. But I'll go by Jim Rundell, Planning Manager, for the sake of this hearing. Here to present on a code amendment regarding some amendments to the mixed-use district. In 2011, the City of Sparks initiated a process to amend the Title 20 and what we call the zoning code for the City of Sparks. The zoning code is what you see today and was generally a result of that process that was started in 2011. These updates like this today keep that as a living, breathing, and current document, unlike what happened prior to 2011, where we were essentially working with a 1976 type of document. In the October and November city council meetings, the city council directed staff to consider some amendments to permit auto-oriented uses in the mixed-use district, internet sales, take a look at gateway signs, and also consider additional locations for tattoo establishments, tattoo parlors. This amendment tonight, as I just touched on, or today, proposes to permit light auto repair and car washes within the mixed-use district's commercial area, subject to a conditional use permit. Oh, can I have the overhead? Thank you. As I was just saying, to permit the light auto repair and car washes within the mixed-use district's commercial area. On the screen that you're looking at, that the council's looking at, it's purple. At the screens that the people behind me are looking at, it is in pink. So essentially, the area is over along Audi Boulevard, the areas on, excuse me, McCarran and Prater Way, some on Victorian Square as well, and then over on Nichols and McCarran identify the areas that are, would permit light auto repair and car washes. Now, what is light auto repair? Well, filters, fluid changes, oil changes, tires, smog tests, brake jobs, those kinds of uses that occur on your car. It would not permit auto body repair. That's something that would still be restricted to the industrial area, primarily the area that is south of Interstate 80 in the City of Sparks. The next part I want to go on to talk about is tattoo parlors in the City of Sparks. Staff believes that the appropriate mechanism to permit tattoo parlors would be by amending the definition or including them in the definition of personal service shops. Let's see. Get out of here. This map is a map of the City of Sparks. The entire City of Sparks, which is tough to fit on just one map. But we've identified some major streets in the City of Sparks and identified the areas in green as areas that currently permit tattoo parlors. By amending the definition and including them in personal service shop, they would also be permitted in the areas that are identified in blue on this map. Well, what's a personal service shop? Currently, a personal service shop is like a beauty salon or a barber shop, a laundry mat, a dry cleaner's, nail salon, pet groomer, those types of uses. Back in the fall, when public testimony was provided to the city council and the council ultimately requested the city manager consider amendments to permitting tattoo parlors, staff went forward and identified all of the tattoo parlors that currently had a business license in the City of Sparks through the help of the city clerk's team, and we sent notifications of a neighborhood meeting that we hosted at the City of Sparks Police Department. The person that we had in attendance was Councilman Anderson, who came and was there with staff. Unfortunately, there weren't any of those constituents that showed, but we did notice that to all of those, that we were aware of conducting that business in the City of Sparks, hoping to gain insight or perspective on the proposed amendments that you're seeing today. What staff did find when we researched permitting tattoos in the personal service shop category was that Washoe County District Health identifies permanent makeup and tattoo parlors as the same type of use. They identify this, and just let me read this, because it is invasive body decoration. So we thought, since District Health has also identified these to be in a similar class of uses, we thought it would be appropriate to do so in the City of Sparks as well. As I touched on earlier in the presentation, part of the direction with this code amendment was to permit internet-based businesses in the mixed-use districts in the City of Sparks. We believe the best way to do this is bifurcate the use of a fulfillment center from wholesale or distribution, and we've proposed that in this code amendment, in the definitions section, and also in the parking section to create its own parking designation. Essentially, the difference is a fulfillment center would be able to have goods sold right to a customer, whereas warehousing would be transferred to another entity that would then be potentially sold to a customer. The last component I want to talk about with this mixed-use district sign amendment is the sign amendment for the gateway signs. Some of the city council may remember that back in 2003, a business came to the City of Sparks that we call In-N-Out Burger. In-N-Out Burger was a pretty exciting use at the time, and the council was very excited, as well as the constituents in the area, the City of Sparks, for having the In-N-Out Burger coming to the city. What the In-N-Out Burger desired at the time was a sign that could be visible from the interstate, Interstate 80. And at that spot, along Interstate 80, along Pyramid Way, the elevation of the interstate is elevated from the grade of the In-N-Out Burger. So staff went away and created a mechanism, what we called the gateway sign ordinance, that permitted a constituent along a gateway in the City of Sparks, for example, Pyramid Highway, excuse me, Pyramid Way, to have a sign that could exceed the typical sign height of 35 feet. When it is oriented toward the interstate, it could go a little bit taller. Now, fast-forwarding a little bit to the City of Sparks creating the transit-oriented development standards, what we now call the mixed-use district area, and Councilman Lawson remembers those days. When we rezoned the area to TOD, now MUD, parcels that had the ability to do the gateway sign, being zoned tourist commercial, lost that ability because they were now no longer zoned tourist commercial. So what this amendment would do is for those parcels that previously had that ability to have a gateway sign because they were zoned tourist commercial and were within that interchange, GPS coordinates of those certain interchange, would again be able to have that right. It would just be reinstated back to them because of the amendments we've done with this code amendment. And that concludes my presentation. Mr. Protem, if you'd like me to answer any questions, I'm available.
Questions from the council? None? This is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up to public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to comment at this time? Any none? Bring it back to the dais. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a comment first.
Mr. Abbott.
I just want to thank staff for looking into this and, you know, uh, more, I'm looking at the tattoo parlors side of it and, you know, what behind, what happens in a beauty salon, barber shop, similar to a tattoo parlor? It's just similar, somewhat similar, uh, maybe a little bit longer than the haircut will be, but, um, just thank you all for getting that done, and, um, if there's any other comments, I'll make a motion if, if you guys want.
Go ahead. Motion by Mr. Abbott.
Um, I move to adopt bill number two seven seven two, amending Title twenty of the Sparks Municipal Code to revise definitions and the maps permitted uses and sign standards for the M U D zoning district, uh, C A dash three dash nineteen.
Seconded by.
I'll second the motion.
By Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion, Mr. Dare?
I just had one, a quick thing. When it comes to the signs, I think it's important. I, I think this is actually really good. I, I like that we give every tool we can to our gateway areas and that stuff for people going by, and, uh, we want, we want to do our best. We're a business-friendly community, we want the best for that, and we don't take it lightly that, uh, it's a sign and it's there, but it's, it's an important one. So, thank you.
And just from my standpoint, we did a lot of work to loosen up our zoning and, and make things a little more business-friendly during the Great Recession there, and there were some mistakes made, and, and I think, uh, zoning rail city as mixed residential was probably one of them. So this cleans that up. It also cleans up some of our other areas that we needed to, uh, make exceptions for like businesses in the same area. So, thank you to staff and thank you for, uh, that's a lot of work, I know, a lot of research to go through all that, and I appreciate that. Any other, any further comments? Okay, I'm looking for a, no, I'm not. I'm looking to say, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Armando, eleven point two. Public hearing discussion of possible adoption of bill number two seven six nine in ordinance and ordinance for approval of the development agreement, number one pursuant to N R S two seventy-eight, zero two zero one between the City of Sparks and Five Ridges Development Company, providing for planning and development of a site of three hundred and eighty-six point eight-seven acres located at five 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 Highland Ranch Parkway, Sparks, Nevada. Armando.
Mayor Pro Tem Lawson and members of the city council, I am Armando Ornelas, uh, the Assistant Community Services Director. So, this agenda item, as, uh, you alluded to, uh, asks the city council to review and approve, uh, a proposed amendment, number one, to the development agreement for the project formerly known as the Quarry and now known as Five Ridges. Uh, the council is being asked to approve the agreement if, first of all, you actually approve of the changes that are proposed, and then, secondly, uh, you're also through, to look at it through the lens of whether, um, this, uh, proposed development agreement conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. So, in terms of the, uh, the, the site, uh, it is located, uh, just west of the Pyramid Highway and, uh, with access off Highland Ranch Parkway. It is three hundred and eighty-seven, um, acres in size. Uh, the purpose of the original agreement, original agreement, which was, uh, approved by the city council in June of two thousand and eighteen, was to identify the permitted uses and the, uh, land use approvals required to develop the property. It specifies the terms and requirements for the provision of infrastructure, and in fact, also served as the, uh, master developer's petition for inclusion in the impact fee service area, number one. Uh, it was processed concurrently with annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and rezoning requests, and it provided the, uh, basis for, uh, the city to find, uh, concurrency, which is essentially the requirement, uh, per the regional plan and our comprehensive plan, that infrastructure and services to serve this development are either in place, uh, will be in place at the time of development. Uh, with regard to the, an overview of the project, um, and I'm going to go to this next, uh, slide, this is the proposed layout of the, of the project. The area, uh, north of, other than this, uh, this portion right adjacent to Highland Ranch Parkway, has a, uh, comp plan designation, comprehensive plan designation of intermediate residential, density residential, and zoning of S F six, which requires those minimums six thousand square foot lots, unless the, uh, small lot standards are being utilized. Uh, and then this area here adjacent to Highland Ranch Parkway, uh, has a, a commercial land use designation and zoning of C two, which is our most liberal, um, uh, commercial land use designation. In terms of the permitted uses, uh, development agreement allows between twelve hundred and eighteen hundred residential units, and in this area adjacent to the, uh, Highland Ranch Parkway, a commercial or multifamily development. Uh, the development agreement also requires a minimum of one hundred acres of open space. So why are we here today? Uh, the master developer has, since that, uh, June two thousand and eighteen approval, uh, undertaken further analysis of the site and their infrastructure plans, and they are, um, out of that work, uh, they are proposing that rather than obtaining their municipal water from the Sun Valley, I'm sorry, from the Trucking Meadows, uh, Water Authority, uh, to instead obtain their water from the Sun Valley General Improvement District. Uh, and associated with that, uh, because they are looking to bring their, and I'll go back to the, to the project site, because they are proposing to, to basically bring water to the site from the west, um, they will, uh, need then to also bring, uh, an access road, and so it makes sense then that the secondary access road, which had not been identified at the time of the original approval, um, be in that location. This gives you, uh, another sense of the layout, and, uh, this, uh, where my cursor is on the screen, that is the location of the proposed secondary emergency access road. Some of the changes to the agreement are, uh, essentially administrative. Uh, it's being updated to reflect that Q K LLC is now the owner of the project site, and Five Ridges Development Company, Inc., which is led by Mr. Blake Smith, is replacing, uh, Q K LLC as the master developer. There is a change to clarify that, uh, in the development agreement itself, that single-family, duplex, and townhouse residential uses are all permitted. Uh, on that portion of the site that has the intermediate density residential designation and the S F six designation, um, i- if some portion of that is to be developed with either duplexes or townhouses, in other words, any sort of attached product, they will have to come back, uh, and amend the comp plan, and, uh, there's only for whatever portion of the site they wish to do that on. And then, of course, um, since we're bringing this current, uh, it's been updated to reflect that, in fact, several of the land use approvals have already occurred. Uh, in terms of the, uh, changes to the agreement to reflect the, uh, Sun Valley G I D providing municipal water to the project, the, um, that, that is subject to the, this city council at a future date approving an agreement with the Sun Valley G I D, uh, essentially to allow the Sun Valley G I D's water system to be under the city's, uh, streets. The streets will be public streets. In our, in the development agreement amendment, we are, uh, reserving to the city council absolute discretion regarding the terms, so, uh, you're going to have to approve the terms of that agreement with the, the Sun Valley G I D, and you have the, the right to, to, uh, you have the right to, uh, you know, essentially, uh, select those terms or decide those terms in, in through negotiations with the Sun Valley G I D. Uh, the master developer is required to submit their water system plans to the City of Sparks, to the city engineer, uh, for review, uh, prior to construction. Um, the agreement specifies that the specifications for that system must equal or exceed that of TMA. And then that water system will have to be in place and constructed, uh, prior to actions of any building permits, of course, under our code, uh, before there can be any combustibles, any wood on the site, for example, you have to have, you have to have water to the site, so that, you know, that follows from that. Other changes to the agreement, um, this, the segment of Highland Ranch Parkway from, uh, the intersection of the Pyramid Way to the entrance to the project, uh, currently the development agreement requires that that be widened from two to four lanes prior to the issuance of any building permits for the project. Under the proposed change, uh, that is being deferred, and this was really based on additional traffic analysis, follow-up traffic analysis, that would be deferred to the earlier of either the six hundred and fifty-first residential unit, or if the segment of Highland Ranch Parkway between Pyramid Highway and the project entrance falls below a level of Service D, or, uh, if the intersection of Pyramid Way and Highland Ranch Parkway, if the level of service on that, at that intersection falls below a level of Service D. So, it would be the earliest of any of these, so it's not, not the, not the later, but the earliest. Uh, in terms of other, other, uh, road-related, um, changes to the agreement, uh, that secondary emergency access road, the one that comes from the west through, uh, through the unincorporated county, uh, from San Valley, um, the timing of that is being moved up to, uh, prior to the first dwelling unit. So, um, in the, in the originally approved agreement, it was, uh, prior to completion of the two-hundredth unit, this would now, it would now be required prior to the first dwelling unit. Uh, and, um, because the road is to connect to a, a Washoe County road, we are requiring written approval from the county prior to the approval of the first tentative map for the project. Uh, with that secondary emergency access road in place, then, um, the, the requirement in the original agreement that the primary access road into the project from Highland Ranch Parkway, um, be allowed to be only two and not four lanes, as you may recall, uh, the requirement for that segment to be four lanes was, uh, because that, that secondary access was, was being deferred. Um, this, this four-lane segment was required to both allow people to leave the project in the, in the event of emergency, and emergency access vehicles to come into the project. That's no longer required with that secondary access. There's also a requirement for, uh, a sidewalk along that segment. Other changes, um, we added a, a requirement for a hydrology and hydraulic analysis, and that analysis must address the, um, capacity improvements that may be needed to, uh, transport sediment, uh, to culverts at Highland Ranch Parkway and Pyramid Way. And those improvements also, um, per the, the revised agreement, would have to be constructed prior to the issuance of any building permits. The sanitary sewer system provisions have been clarified, there was some, they were a little, uh, ambiguous in the original agreement, uh, and while a developer is not, uh, anticipating building as many as six, one thousand six hundred and fifty units in the event that that were to occur, based on some additional analysis, uh, the collection system would have to be, the capacity of that collection system would have to be increased. Another change is that, uh, and this was at developers' request, that in the event the City of Sparks were, for example, to construct another fire station, uh, six specifically, um, and if that were to then put some portion of the undeveloped portion of the site, uh, within a four-minute response or travel time from that fire station, then they could ask for, um, an exception to having to sprinkler those homes. Finally, and I'm getting near the conclusion of the proposed changes, uh, there was some, again, some more, more administrative requirements, uh, in terms of easements and access for cities' utilities being required. Uh, we clarified that that portion of the quarry site that was previously disturbed can be excluded from the disturbed calculations for the site, and then, uh, at developers' request, uh, the development agreement allows for possible development of a dark skies community. Um, a dark skies community was one where you're minimizing, uh, the lighting bleeding into the sky, and therefore, um, allows for, you know, uh, a greater view of the, of a nice sky and, and the stars. Typically, that's done by reducing the amount of street lighting and other, and otherwise, you know, trying to minimize the, uh, upward casting of light. Um, that would be, uh, subject to the approval of the fire and police chiefs. Um, so, uh, that concludes my review of the changes to the agreement. Um, as I said at the outset, um, we're asking you to approve the agreement if, in fact, you concur with the proposed changes, and then, secondly, if you can still find that the development agreement would conform with the comprehensive plan, um, staff and the planning commission, uh, are recommending approval because we believe that it still does, it still provides for concurrency of infrastructure and services, and it still supports, uh, policies M G five and C F one, the comprehensive plan. That concludes my presentation, and I'll address any questions.
Questions? The, um, Mr. Abbott.
On the, the Highland Ranch expansion to six, six fifty-one, I think it was, you said that was at the earliest, so.
Yeah, so let me, if I may, uh, Councilman Abbott, um, so, uh, in the lower right-hand corner of the screen here, this is, this is the segment that we're talking about, here's the intersection of Pyramid Way and Highland Ranch Parkway. It's this segment here, um, that would have to go to four lanes, and it would have to do so, um, in, in the approved agreement, um, that was required right off the bat. The traffic analysis, additional traffic analysis work that was done, uh, indicated that that wasn't really necessary until, uh, one of these three things happened. Uh, we get to six hundred and fifty-one units, or, uh, we have, uh, degradation in terms of level of service either at the intersection with Pyramid Way or along that segment itself.
So that's six hundred and fifty-one of, of people living.
Constructed units.
Construction, like, people are actually living in the unit.
No, no, the construction.
Construction, of building permits.
Oh, not of building permits, but of, uh, certificate of occupancy or final, final.
Okay, yes, yeah, got you. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Along those lines, that same section there, I thought I saw that sidewalks were going to be required. Is that from, from Pyramid into the entrance, and then would that only be when it becomes four lanes, or did I misunderstand that?
Uh, that, that sidewalk requirement is on this, the, uh, this entrance or this primary access road into the project.
Okay, so it's not from Pyramid into the development? Okay.
Who else? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up to public comment now. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Any none? Do you want to speak, Mr. Smith?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay. Say, I like a man who knows when he's winning. All right, we'll bring it back to the dais, and I'm looking for a motion.
And I'll make that motion.
Yes, Mr. Dare.
I move to adopt bill number two seven six nine, an ordinance for approval of the development agreement, amendment number one pursuant to N R S two seven eight point zero two zero one between the City of Sparks, Q K LLC, and Five, Five Ridges Development Company Incorporated, providing for planning and development of a site thirty-eight, three hundred and eighty-six point eight-seven acres in size located at five 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 Highland Ranch Parkway, Sparks, Nevada.
Okay, second, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Bybee, ladies first.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
The second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 If opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Let's get this baby going.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Eleven point three, public hearing, uh, consideration possible action on a request to amend a final plan development handbook, Kylie Ranch North, Phase Two, to add approximately nine point three acres and redefine the clarified land uses allowed in the N U D, New Urban District, Kylie Ranch North, zoning district generally located east of Kylie Parkway, north of Windmill Farms Parkway, and south of Wingfield Hills Road in Sparks, Nevada. Jonathan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Members of the council, I'm Jonathan Cummins, planner. This item is a request to amend Plan Development Handbook for the Kylie Ranch North, Phase Two Plan Development. Uh, quick background on Kylie Ranch North, the tentative, uh, handbook was approved originally in two thousand and four, uh, to include just over eight hundred and thirty acres, and that tentative handbook serves today as sort of an umbrella document which guides the phases of Kylie Ranch North that are developed, uh, one piece at a time. Um, just recently, in November of two thousand and nineteen, that tentative handbook was amended, amended by the city council, and now includes just over eight hundred and seventy-four acres, and, uh, is a better, uh, sort of description of the vision that, that, uh, the applicant has for Kylie Ranch North in terms of a better mix of uses. So, the handbook for Phase Two, which is outlined in red in the image here, and I'll describe this, uh, graphic a little bit more in just a moment. This phase was originally approved in two thousand and six, was amended in two thousand and fourteen, and, uh, as of today, includes just over twelve acres. Um, it's divided up into, uh, mainly mixed use, but also some open space as well. So today's request is to add nine point three acres, which is the part outlined in greenish-yellow or yellowish-green, uh, on the graphic, uh, to the twelve point zero one section, uh, twelve point zero one acre section outlined in blue, and so the resulting Phase Two property will be what is outlined in red in the graphic. in blue, and so the resulting Phase Two property will be what is outlined in red in the graphic. So, in addition to the new size, the applicant is also proposing some changes to the permitted uses in Kylie Ranch North, Phase Two. So, I'll make a quick jump from this to a version that has one little addition and one piece of it stricken through in red. So, the mix of uses that exists today in Kylie Ranch North, Phase Two, includes a mix of housing with a somewhat of an emphasis on senior housing, as you can see in this image, and so one of the added, proposed added uses to the, to the used table will be intermediate medical care, which will complement the senior housing component that's still emphasized for this phase. And a couple of lines down from there, the applicant is proposing to remove detached single-family residential from the list of permitted uses in order to better achieve a mixed-use environment with an emphasis on multifamily residential condominiums, townhomes, things like that. And so, in addition to that, we have a list of several more uses that would be added in order to better achieve, again, the mixed-use character that is envisioned for Phase Two site. And so, just to run through that pretty quickly, medical office, lodging, personal services, and restaurants are a key addition, as well as parking and drive-through facilities, civic uses to include schools and parks, as well as cultural centers for outdoor events and things like that. So, the mixed-use character now better conforms with the tentative handbook and also allows us to sort of make some of the required findings for amendment to a plan development handbook. And so, with that, there are 10 required findings for an amendment to a plan development handbook. Broken those up into some categories here to try to expedite the review for your consideration. Finding A requires conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. This project meets goal MG one, which looks for economic vitality by emphasizing a non-residential land use base. The commercial uses that we've added to the permitted use table helps us accomplish that. And goal MG two, which looks for a diverse land use mix. Finding C asks you to consider whether changes to a plan development are going to be fiscally positive to the city. Prior to the November 2019 changes to the tentative handbook, a fiscal impact analysis was prepared for the entirety of the Kylie Ranch North site, and so the changes to the Phase Two site are not going to require further fiscal impact analysis at this time. Finding B asks you to consider whether or not the changes are consistent with surrounding land uses. To the north and west of the site are properties that are also categorized as mixed use, and to the south and east are properties that are strictly residential. The mix of uses proposed in the amendment to the handbook are compatible with both of those things, providing commercial and other services to the residents of Kylie Ranch North more broadly, specifically to the residents of those surrounding areas. Finding H asks you to consider whether or not changes to a plan development handbook would affect the enjoyment of adjacent lands. As I said, we're remaining consistent with the surrounding uses, the mixed use and residential uses that surround this property, but we're also sort of bringing what's allowed on the Phase Two site into conformance with what's envisioned by the tentative handbook, so the more broad scope of what Kylie Ranch North should look like eventually. So, we have about four findings that ask you to look at the effects on residents. Finding D asks you to consider whether the changes are going to further the interests of residents and owners, and whether or not the changes will preserve the integrity of the original plan. The proposed changes will accomplish both by coming into conformance, again, with the tentative handbook for Kylie Ranch North, by looking for a better mix of uses to better represent the vision for what the developers, what the applicant is looking to do with this part of the city. Findings E and F asks you to look for whether or not the changes will impair reliance on that original plan, and whether or not the changes will adversely affect the public interest. The proposed land uses, again, are going to conform with the tentative handbook, which is our ultimate goal here, but also the majority of the uses proposed in this amendment pretty closely resemble what was already approved in the existing Phase Two handbook. And as a side note, these four findings do ask you to look at what the changes are going to do, or the effects that the changes might have on residents or property owners. At this time, Phase Two is undeveloped, other than an office building, which, which the developer has its, you know, sort of office space in at this time, and so there's essentially no residents being affected by these changes inside the Phase Two site. Finding I asks you to consider whether or not the changes are being conferred, or being, excuse me, being requested in order to confer private benefit on any individual, and so these changes essentially are intended to benefit all the residents of Phase Two going forward, as well as the residents of Kylie Ranch North more broadly, North Sparks more broadly, and will not, you know, confer private benefit on any one individual more than any other. And our public notice requirement and public hearing, today's meeting, of course, as well as today's agenda, satisfy those requirements. We did also mail 89 notices to property owners within 750 feet of the site, and published that notice on January 3rd in the Reno Gazette Journal. And so, Planning Commission is recommending approval of this item, and I'll be glad to take your questions.
Questions from the dius?
Comment?
Yes, Ms. Bybee?
I appreciate the change in these uses and the kind of vision of what we're looking not just to have single-family homes in all of North Sparks as we keep going further north, and I think really that community concept, and the ability to provide services and restaurants and churches, and especially the townhouse, multifamily, but other housing options, I think, is what we're missing in the city, so I appreciate all the other uses, and especially the senior care facilities and uses, as adding something that we are lacking and definitely need in this community as we continue to grow. So, I appreciate the changes and the whole concept of this, I think it's right in line with what we're looking at as we're trying to do smart growth. So, thank you, and thank you to the developer.
Any other comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, we'll open it up to public comment, anyone in the public wishing to comment at this time? See none? We'll bring it back to the dius, looking for a motion.
I'd like a motion.
Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the amended final plan development handbook Kylie Ranch North, Phase Two, to add approximately 9.3 acres and redefine and clarify land uses allowed in the handbook's mixed-use category on a site approximately 21.31 acres in size in the NUD, New Urban District, Kylie Ranch North, zoning district generally located east of Kylie Parkway, north of Windmill Farms Parkway, and south of Wingfield Hills Road, Sparks, Nevada. Adopted findings A through J and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Bybee, second. That, then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. All right, down to number 12, comments from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment? I can't see over there. I can't, I can't see that far away. Did you fill out a card for me?
Yeah, I will fill out a card.
All right.
I'm not even going to sit down because it's going to be very quick. On consent items, I know you guys may not be able to answer my question, but 8.3 for 54,297, 725, how many masks do we get for that?
I'm going to ask the city manager to get with you on that.
And we will follow up after the meeting, since this is public comment and not public conversation.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Make sure you fill out that card for me. Okay, we're going to move on to 12.2, comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager. We're, I was just passing a note, is Spanish Springs High School band here? Nope?
They were going to be here, but I haven't seen them.
Well, Christopher, you want to talk about what the council has done?
Sure, we have the Spanish Springs High School band that are taking a trip, they're going to be down and playing at Disneyland in California, and so we have, with our mayor leading the way, has asked if we could all kind of pitch in, and so we all did, and we're going to help get some of these students down there. We'll actually have them come back and tell us what they got to do, and we'll get to see it. But one of the things that I know we are excited always to do is to help continue supporting our students in what they do, whether it's some of the, I know the efforts we've seen over at Sparks, or at Reed, or wherever, I'll tell you, investing into our students is awesome, so I'll bring it over to them, I'll go and see them. And, but I'll, I'll ask them to come back and show us some pictures and get a picture with Mickey or something like that.
Bring the marching band, whatever.
That'd be great.
Donald, too, just saying.
And Goofy.
Goofy, yeah. Any other comments from the city council, manager? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. I guess I should have gavelled that out.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, February 24th, 2020, with roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Dare?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Smith is absent. Abbott?
Here.
Acting Chief Legal Officer McCormick?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Krutz?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number three, public comment. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 4.1, approval of the agenda for possible approval?
Do you approve?
Motion by agency member Dare?
Second?
Second? Which, who gave me the second?
He's closer.
Agency member Anderson, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.1, minutes. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of January 27th, 2020. Do I have corrections, additions, or a motion to approve?
Need to approve?
I have a motion by agency member Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by agency member Dare. Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
Or say aye, sorry. I used to have in my, my machine here. Okay, move down to item 6.1. Business items. Consideration, possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of January 15th, 2020 through February 7th, 2020, for possible action. Do I have a motion to approve?
Need to approve?
I have a motion to approve by agency member Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by agency member Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I said here.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, 7.1, comments from the public. Do I have any comments from the public at this time? Seeing none. Item 7.2, comments from the agency and chief administrative officer. Seeing none, we are adjourned.